God, who has reconciled us to himself through Christ and given us the ministry of reconciliation. Namely, God was reconciling the world to himself in Christ, not counting their trespasses against them, and entrusting us the message of reconciliation. So we are ambassadors for Christ, as if God were appealing through us. We implore you on behalf of Christ, as if God. The response is, "We bless you, oh Lord." Bless the Lord for making all things new. Bless the Lord for the gift of reconciliation. Bless the Lord for the Lord's trust in us to be ambassadors of the good news. Bless you, Lord. Bless the Lord for making us people who can be peacemakers. Bless the Lord for the chance to reconcile with one another and grow in God's love. Let us share a sign of peace as our commitment to work for the peace and justice that our redemption requires. Let us pray to keep the cross ever before us as we seek to do God's will. Amen.
I inform that I'll be faithful, bear true allegiance to your majesty in the fifth second Queen of Canada, the third success of the year, and that I'll faithfully serve law of Canada and fulfill my duties to Canadian citizens.
Thank you, trustee Anna Maria. We have not completed our in-camera session, so we will be returning to that after this regular board meeting. So at this moment in time, I'm afraid we do not have any motions or information to share with you. We are now going to item two, approval of the agenda.
I have a point of order, madam chair.
Excuse me?
I have a point of order for the agenda.
Yes.
Item one, eight point three, the motion to reconsider. It is in violation of our bylaws. The motion to reconsider is to be made at the same meeting as the original vote. And this is clearly, we're more than a month away from January sixteenth.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn, did you have anything to say about your particular, where is it? I've lost it now. Yes, eight point two.
I will do that in the, at the actual eight point two session.
Okay, all right. Any other comments with regard to the agenda?
Through you, actually, madam chair, would you mind moving up eight point three to eight point two? We have some visitors in the gallery.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
I said it was, point of order was that that item was out of order. That it's a violation to our bylaws that state a motion to reconsider is made at the same meeting as the original vote.
Um, thank you. Ten point two zero, I did look at this considerably. And given the fact that this happened at the last meeting, our student trustees had asked for time to speak to their colleagues and their fellow students about this particular issue, and that was not given to them. And given the interest that's come into this particular issue, not only from ratepayers, but from students and from members of the clergy, I do find that ten point twenty is loose, what I would classify as loose. But I am going to allow it this time because of the interest in this. And I'm also going to make a recommendation that ten point twenty be revisited when we do the board's bylaws, and it should be tightened up so that we don't have this looseness around the word "may." So I've ruled on that, thank you.
Can I appeal that ruling?
Pardon me?
I'd like to appeal that ruling. I still, um, to appeal the decision of the chair on that.
Um, all right.
We should follow our bylaws.
Well, I am concerned that that is the word "may," it isn't the word "must." So that's the ruling that I'm giving on that particular one. It needs more discussion. We may come up with the same ruling, but we may not. And I am concerned that we did not give the time that we could have given to it last time, especially with the consideration of the students' request. Yes?
If I may, Chair, the motion to reconsider, I mean, I think it's pretty clear, ten twenty says, the motion to reconsider should have occurred at the same meeting when the original motion was decided, and then the reconsideration may or may not occur at the same meeting.
The board may, may set aside a vote, taken on a motion, in order to reexamine its actions if the motion is to reconsider is made at the same meeting as the original vote. It says "may," it doesn't say "must," and I would like that changed. Okay? We are just going to have a discussion on this. If you don't want to have a discussion, I have a problem with that, particularly when our students are asking for it. Trustee Quinn.
I'm going to second trustee Carabella's motion to appeal the chair's decision.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to this? All right, so I think we have to take a vote now? No? Well, I thought I had ruled on it, but don't we have to take a vote on that?
There is a vote.
Okay, well, that's what we're going to do. We're going, we're going to listen, sorry?
There is a vote. I'll show you which number it is.
Please do.
Eleven point seven. Ruling of the chair. The ruling...
Okay, eleven point seven for the people in the gallery. Ruling of the chair, the ruling of the chair shall be final, subject only to an appeal of the ruling to the board by or by a member without debate. Such appeals shall be voted upon, and a simple majority carries such a motion. So at this point, we will take a vote. Any other comments? Oh, yes, okay, Paul.
Chair Abenda, an affirmative vote would overturn your ruling, which would therefore remove the reconsideration from this meeting.
That's right. But on the ten point one point, whatever it is, that they can do that. Correct?
Your ruling was to keep the, the vote to reconsider on today's agenda.
Yes.
Right? And we're challenged by, your, your ruling was to keep it on the agenda, there was an appeal. So our vote is on the appeal.
Yes.
So an affirmative vote is an appeal to, an affirmative vote overturns your ruling.
Yes, yes, yes. But that's what I'm, what I'm saying. The matter we have to do now. So basically, I'm saying that it's based on the agenda. And you are saying, yes, it's based on the agenda, then you're in favor, correct?
An affirmative vote overturns your ruling.
Okay, all right. So trustee Carabella?
In favor. Opposed?
Trustee in front of me.
Opposed.
Trustee Michael.
Opposed. In favor.
Trustee Mike, Mr. Murray.
Opposed.
Trustee, in favor.
In favor.
Trustee in front of me.
Opposed.
Trustee, Mr. Murray.
Opposed.
Trustee, please.
In favor.
Local? Okay, then I am voting for the top two of the list tonight. Okay? Any other questions on that? You know, you tell me, tell me, I need to be prepared.
Yes.
Have we agreed we're going to move it from eight point three to eight point two?
No, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Um, eight point three, so tell me again, trustee Trix, what you wanted to move and why?
As the agenda is now, eight point three is the reconsideration of the resolution twenty nine point eighteen. I'd like that to be moved up to eight point two. And presumably, eight point two would become eight point three.
Um, tr, hold on. Trustee Quinn, do you want to speak to eight point two?
Uh, I, I can wait to speak eight point two.
Are you removing eight point two, in which case?
No, I'm not.
You're not, okay.
But I, I don't mind if you switch it.
I'm sorry, you don't mind switching?
No.
Because the last email I had from you, you were removing it.
That's what I intend to do, at the time.
Okay, all right. Okay, so.
So eight point three, uh, eight point two, I'm sorry, is reconsidered, resolution twenty nine point eighteen.
Thank you, madam chair.
Eight point three is the salary reason. Okay, so where are we here? Approved the agenda. And amended. Does it include anything else? All right. Trustee in front of me, thank you. Trustee Trix, seven hit, all in favor? Thank you. Any other corrections of conflict of interest? Representation four point one, Camp Summerland. Literacy and numeracy development for students, superintendent of camp.
Thank you, madam chair. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce two of our staff, principal Daniela Tardo and vice principal Angie Barden, to share some news about Camp Summerland and what our plans are for this year. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. We have a brief video that we will show you first, actually, so you can get to see what Summerland looks like. So Camp Summerland is a summer learning program that is funded by Code. The project is meant to have students engage in academics in an engaging and fun way to combat the summer slump that often happens when students are away from school. Our program runs daily at three different municipal sites. We have one in Milton, one in Oakville, and one in Burlington for three weeks in July. And the program is staffed by HCDSP teachers in order to support student well-being and academic excellence, excellence in a supportive Catholic learning environment. So we've had three years of experience, and over those years, we have learned that while students have made exceptional gains in our literacy portion of the program, they haven't made the same results in regards to numeracy. Students engage in something called STAR testing, which is a pre and post test. So last year, we created a better plan in which we would only deal with number sense in the numeracy program, which would help with computational strategy. This allows students greater understanding of numeracy, which they could transfer across all their strengths when they came back to school. We used a focus of number talks and problem solving as its foundation. Diagnostic assessment at the beginning of the program helped us to track the data related to achievement. Teachers felt that all students had made gains. Literacy continued to have a focus on increased reading influency. We use guided text, but also highlights operational writing to support the needs teachers presented to us. So procedural writing, letter writing, those kinds of things. So Camp Summerland is monitored and managed by Code, a regional team. They work with us before the program starts, as well as during and post as well. The students, as Angie mentioned, they participate in the pre and post assessments, and that helps provide the data for our strengths and needs of the program. The teachers are provided with profiles that come from the current teachers. So this year's teachers will be creating profiles so that we can really have the program very targeted and intentional to the needs of the students that will be coming to the program for 2018. We do have a report card at the end of the program for parents as well. Parents are invited weekly, every Friday, we open the doors at the end of the day for parents to come in. You saw a few in the video, I'm not sure if you could tell the difference between the teachers and the parents. The parents are welcome to come in to celebrate the learning, but also to see the instructional practices that the teachers are using. And parents also are welcome each day. At the end of the day, we do have a conference time with them, and the teachers use Twitter to tweet out the learning, and that also helps engage all three of our sites. Campers' election, again, the teachers from the schools across our board work with their administrators and their special ed teams and their curriculum teams to develop profiles. The curriculum department has helped us each year to kind of tweak this profile so we can really make sure that when we are using the information from the profile to best meet the needs in the summer program. The profiles are reviewed, and then we create the classes. We do have twenty students, a maximum of twenty students in each of the classes, and we, we group them based on needs, grades, and gender. And the parents, we try, we really try to make sure that we give them the information, the confirmation, early enough so that if they're not able, if they've booked a summer vacation, it's important that all the students are there for the full three weeks. So we want to make sure that we're able to offer that spot to another family if they're not able to commit to the program, as well to also help with childcare needs throughout the summer, give them that nice and early. So Camp, uh, Code does require that a hundred and eighty minutes of our day is dedicated to literacy and numeracy instruction. So outside of those a hundred and eighty minutes, we make sure that, well, that a hundred and eighty minutes is fun and engaging for the students, but we also make sure that it's well-rounded. Art is really heavily involved in the program. The students love the art activities, the inquiry projects, phys ed as well. Religion is integrated throughout the program, through daily prayer. We do Christian meditation daily, and we do a number of inquiry projects. We include our social justice initiatives as well. The activities, we include field trips. We, this past summer, we went to the RBG as well as movie theater, and we'll, based on the needs of our students and their interests, we will look at other opportunities for the campers this summer. And we also bring in guests, the scientists in the school is really well-received as well as strong fit. So Code funds us, and we've received funding again this year for six classes, and each class receives fifteen thousand dollars, and that covers the staff, the materials, and the facilities. Last year, we were able to, with that funding, open up nine classes. So rather than two classes at each site, we had three classes at each site, and we plan to do that again this summer, for this summer as well. There's absolutely no cost to the parents for the camp. All of the trips, all of the activities, including lunches and snacks for the students, are all integrated in the cost of the program. The funding, sorry. That's it? Yeah, that's it.
What's your PTR on that? What's the PTR?
Pupil teacher ratio? So it's twenty, we have twenty students in each class, but we do have four teachers at each site.
Okay.
We also bring in student helpers. A lot of the high school students volunteer their hours. And Code also supports us with mentors for robotics. And this year, they're also, they've also offered ELL funding, so we're going to have in-staffing for that as well.
Thank you. And you didn't mention Halton Hills. Is there any effort to get to Halton Hills, or do you not have the numbers there?
We haven't, we haven't had the numbers. We do have a number of students that do come from Georgetown to the Milton site. So that's something that we can review again this year, based on the student profiles that are submitted, and if perhaps we need to. One of, one of our previous considerations have been the facilities we use are used by the English as a second, or the language learners programs.
International language.
The international language learners programs, because then they're already being staffed, right? So it does save us on some of our costs. Georgetown has no international language classes that run in their summer program. So there hadn't been any schools available for us to use previously.
Thank you for coming. So I'm wondering, you have, you do assessments for your students. Do most of the ones who apply get in, or is there a big waiting list? Or how do you choose your students?
Profiles are carefully selected. The maximum number of students are roughly a hundred and eighty for the entire program. Each year, we have probably more than four hundred who, teachers whose profiles are put forward. Learning skills become really the core for how campers are chosen. We can combat low reading scores, but we can't combat when there might be low interest in disengagement. So we're looking for students that have the ability to self-regulate, who have a little bit of independence, so that they can participate in a more wholesome way in what's happening in the program.
Thank you. Any other questions from trustees? Well, thank you. It looks like a wonderful program, and it certainly will help our students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Thank you. All right, we will move on now to the, no delegations, point number six, approval of the minutes. A mover, please. Trustee Quinn, seconded by. Trustee Roe. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, there is just one item, I think, on the minutes, outstanding items, which you can check. Nothing new. Moving into action items. Eight point one, rescinding, hate that word. Rescinding the decision to close Holy Family Catholic Elementary School. Vice chairman, I.
In this case, it's a very positive thing. Thank you, madam chair. If I may read out the motion and speak to it, I'll make it pretty quick because I, I think most of you are aware of, aware of it. But whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the consolidation of Holy Family Catholic Elementary with Saint Marguerite de Ville Catholic Elementary on March seventh, twenty seventeen, with the following motion, be it resolved that in the event the Ministry of Education does not approve funding for option one A through the twenty seventeen school consolidation capital submission, the Halton Catholic District School Board adopt and implement part two of option twelve B, the alternate plan as the preferred accommodation plan for the Oakville Northeast Pupil Accommodation Review area. Specifically, that the Halton Catholic District School Board consolidate Holy Family into Saint Marguerite de Ville School effective the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, and that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the construction of a permanent classroom addition to Saint Marguerite that will effectively accommodate the sustainable projected student enrollment. So whereas the Ministry of Education provided no funding for this initiative, whereas a moratorium on school closures was enacted by the provincial government just three months later, in June twenty seven, seventeen, excuse me, be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board rescind the above motion, number sixty-eight seventeen, and keep Holy Family Catholic Elementary open. And if I may speak just quickly to that. Oh, thank you. Thank you. So, so. Okay. So I, I see this is a very positive motion for the board, because I think it confirms the Catholic footprint in the Folgerwood community. I can't speak better than the delegations that came to the board in the past. I think they spoke to it well, and you all heard them at the time. That, that said, that past decision was based on the idea that the ministry would provide funding for consolidating our schools. In the end, we didn't really get anything out of it. Now, we speak to numerous Folgerwood families who, who continue to say they'd like a, a local school. We also know that the numbers aren't necessarily stable in that, in that community. It's, you have a lot of younger families coming in. It, it, you know, and, and we monitor that as a board on a, on a continuous basis. One of the other reasons why I brought this motion up is because we know, just from the geography of Holy Family, with upper middle and a significant barrier there, we will see, and we've heard back from the community, that there'll be a significant outflow of students from the Catholic community to the public school system, thirty percent plus. And that could mean a significant decrease in, in funding to, you know, to, to, to the board, and, and reduce the size of, of the impact of Catholic education in, in, in the region. And finally, as I mentioned in the motion, the, the provincial government itself brought up the fact that there were some kind of serious concerns with some of the factors of consolidation, and they put a moratorium on this. So I felt, considering there was almost unanimous opposition to this consolidation in this community, I, I felt we should, we should rescind this, this motion and try to build up this, this community school and, and go from there as a board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice chairman, I. And trustee Quinn, seconded that. Trustees, do you have any questions or comments you would like to make with regard to this particular motion? Uh, trustee Ian Tomasi, and then trustee Carabella.
Through you, madam chair. I'll be supporting the motion, but I, I just want it to be clear that we don't know what the next government's going to do. And so I think sadly, the, the school community should be aware that this may come back because without knowing what the next government is going to do, that could squeeze our funding very badly. And if we have the empty pupil places, and the board simply has to start cutting here or there, as we've been faced with before, that this may have to be revisited.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella.
I will be supporting this motion today, as I did in the past, to keep Holy Family School open. I think a neighborhood school should stay in the neighborhood for as long as it possibly can, and every effort made to make it viable.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments? I'm sorry, trustee Dankel, and then was there somebody else? Oh, I think he was just turning off the microphone.
Chair Abenda, I can, I'll be supporting the motion as well, but I would like to hear from the treasurer about the implications on the operating costs with the loss of the empty pupil places funding, and also from a curriculum superintendent with the consequences to planning.
Thank you. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, madam chair. The loss of funding on the top of, the top of funding is one aspect when, that, that we consider when we look at school closures and consolidations. Over the past four years, it has been eliminated. In total, for the board, we have lost about a million dollars per year in top of funding. That isn't something that is going to be changing in the future, at least there's no information that they're reconsidering that. There are operating savings that we look at when we consider bringing into communities. There are operating savings that we look at when we consider bringing into communities, but more important is also the curriculum and the programming that we can offer to a school that has more of a medium to a large size population and perhaps some of my colleagues could comment on the benefits of that.
Thank you. Superintendent Pocassen?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you very much for the question. Certainly with regard to efficiencies and curriculum program delivery, there are always savings when a school is bigger, based upon what the aspects are that we can offer students with regard to not just the actual curriculum, but clubs and all of the things that have been discussed over time. So insofar as efficiencies, as Superintendent Nagoy pointed out, the original plan certainly favored financially the bringing of the two schools together.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn, did you have something?
Yes, thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. I do want to acknowledge the hard work that the staff put in when they have brought us the, the potential for closing Holy Family and enlarging Saint Marguerite. But the provincial government's change of mandate soon thereafter, I think, is a, it should be a reprise for the families at Holy Family and that when we hear direction further from the ministry, again, we're now in our third ministry of education since I've been a trustee, when we get direction, I think then we can look at it again, but I, I will be supporting trustee Moray's motion, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Danko?
One further question, Chair Abenda, so can anyone, in lieu of this change of direction, which we could wait for, for many terms, I suppose, what, what would, what are, what are some ideas that staff would have to, to make the school viable going forward?
Uh, the enrollments have just come out and I can't remember what Holy Families is right now. It just came out from our sixty-eight percent, okay. Um, okay, it just came out from the business office, I just can't recall what it was. Staff for Holy Family, who's the superintendent for Holy Family?
Tony.
Tony, okay. Um, the superintendent for, Paul, did you have something?
Well, yes.
Okay. The superintendent for Saint John's Oakville and, Tony? Okay, all right, uh, go ahead.
One of the reasons is I, I thought that we need to give some sort of confirmation to the community as a, as a first step and I think, I think it's great if we could have further discussions on how we can booster the, boost the programming at the school to make it more viable in the long term, but I, I didn't necessarily think it was reasonable to do it all within one motion.
Thank you. So I guess it would be the same things as I've been doing in other small schools and we'll get more details when we get the superintendent here, okay? Any other questions? No? Are you ready for the vote? Are we ready? All right, trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Ro?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Vice Chair Moray?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you. Now, we are going down to the new eight point two, which was the old eight point three, which is reconsider resolution twenty-nine dash eighteen, upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits. Trustee Ro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The resolution is resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board reconsider resolution number twenty-nine slash eighteen, upholding the sanctity of life through donations to charities and nonprofits.
Thank you. Now, um, because this is a motion to reconsider, I believe that I will need five votes to get this onto the agenda, correct? All right, so I guess I'm going to ask...
On the order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You need a second or for that motion, then this is debatable.
Uh, I don't think it is.
It's debatable.
To have it put onto the agenda, where is it come?
Madam Chair, the motion to reconsider needs a second or and it is debatable unto itself.
We're told it needs five people to put it on and five people to pass it.
Notice was already given and it's on the agenda, you ruled that it's on the agenda.
Yes.
And we're voting on it. Trustee Ro needs a second or.
Okay.
And then it's debatable.
Okay, because we had to rule on it, okay.
Right.
I should keep you on the shelf, you know, you're very handy. Not snowing tonight, oh well. All right, so, yes, we do have that ruling. All right, so we need a second or then. Uh, trustee Michael, thank you. All right, so trustee Ro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, supported the, um, motion initially because the schools already do an exemplary job of, uh, supporting the poor and needy through their loc, through, supporting local organizations. But, um, upon reflection and after several people spoke to me, there was concern around the use of the word indirectly by, in, within the motion. Because I'm, they were concerned and I'm concerned about the interpretation of the word indirectly and how far it would go and who could make the decisions on it. So as far as procedures are concerned, it, it's very nebulous, a nebulous kind of procedure as to who would make the decision, when they would be made and, and how it would be implemented. So, um, um, I think that the idea of the motion is, is, is fine, because it helps to give, clearly requires the schools to support recipients of their charities, um, being given to groups that, that respect life and, and that's fine, but to, to delve into the details of, of organizations, especially overseas, when, if a decision is made by a large organization overseas that affects a particular place overseas, um, you know, that can be, that can be interpreted different ways, from this point of view, from our privileged position in Halton. So, um, so that's why I would like the, the motion as it stands to be reconsidered.
Thank you. Any other comments to this before we vote? Trustee Ingrid and then trustee Michael?
Um, so as we had asked for time to consult our students, we have actually completed a consultation with our student senate group at our last senate meeting and we thought it would be beneficial to share to, with everyone, the results of this consultation and some of the points that our senators brought up. So, um, of all the, um, we took votes in our individual high schools and then recorded people who were against the motion and at every single one of the high school senate groups, every single student was against the motion as it was presented. Some of the point, points that they brought up is that we have a lot of deep-rooted school traditions and a very strong sense of community in our schools that this motion might affect and our students have issues that they support at their schools and students who benefit from some of the charities that they are very passionate about and they're very, they're very concerned about keeping these traditions and these communities intact. Uh, our students, we are so proud of our students that, of our senators that they're so vocal and they're so ambitious and some students took this and brought this back to their own school and in fact, some of our corpus senators brought this motion to, brought this, um, what we talked about at the meeting to the broader school community and as you can see in the correspondence, she has emailed all the students that have shown, shown support for rescinding this, um, this policy as it stands, over two hundred students have voiced these concerns. So, uh, we thought, we're nothing if we don't share the broader voice of the students, that's what, we are here to do, that is what we are, that's what our role entails, is to provide the student perspective and I think our results speak as to what the broader student voice is and if I can pass to Anna or something like...
Anna Maria, did you want to add to Ingrid? Yes, she is, unless you were, unless you're together, you're not together? Okay. Okay, I'll come back to you, Anna Maria. Okay, so trustee Michael then trustee Danko and then Anna Maria.
Um, after listening to what we just heard and what we hear every week, like, I'm incredibly proud of the students, the senators, for trying to make the world a better place for everyone and when you see the commitment they have, they're intelligent young people, they're able to weigh for themselves the merits of donating to a cause, even when they may not support one hundred percent of the activities carried on by the charity, but this discourages them from doing their own research, exercising their own judgment and choosing to give to the causes closest to their heart in a manner that ensures their donations have greatest impact. Um, it, I think the resolution is overly broad in like, in this day of large, complex, multinational corporations, where some of the largest best-known charities, um, do touch on some of these activities that we are all against, but I think that we could amend the resolution just by simply attaching a letter that says that all funds forwarded charities, um, will state that none of the funds that we're giving would be donated to use for any of the restricted activities and I think that would help everybody out. Just a thought.
At this moment, it's a thought, right? Okay. Um, trustee Danko, trustee Tomasi, did you have something to say? Okay, Anna, after Anna Maria then, trustee Carabella after, okay. Okay, trustee Danko?
Anna Maria.
Anna Maria's next, okay, Anna Maria.
Okay. Uh, so before I begin, I'd like to announce a possible conflict of interest, so I've been the student leader of the Free the Children Committee for the past three years at Holy Trinity and this is an organization that the board officially no longer would support under the motion. So, uh, like Ingrid had said overwhelmingly, the entirety of the forty-two senate, student senate representatives that were present at our meeting opposed the motion. The most recurrent theme that I noticed was that students were concerned about the community aspect of their schools. These organizations have created clubs, events, a sense of belonging amongst their school, promoting leadership and service and they would, were concerned that this would inhibit their ability to have focal leadership roles among already existing groups who we have supported for over a decade in some cases and who are trusted and rooted within our community. Uh, this would not only limit our ability to give back, but not only, we've not, we do not in any way currently support, directly support any of the items, abortion contraceptives, we don't donate to that directly, but instead support the assistance of those most vulnerable and in need through these organizations. Like Ingrid had said, students from some high schools have circulated information packets for the student information, these were done completely independent of the board and with no affiliation and most of these schools have been involved with numerous organizations that are now coming into question and dedicated significant time and funds that they're very, very passionate about and would hate to see us not, no longer be affiliated with.
Thank you. Um, just for clarification, correct me please, I have trustee Danko and then I'm not sure whether it's trustee Carabella or trustee Ian Tomasi comes next. Okay, Arlene and then, okay, okay. Trustee Danko?
Uh, thank you, Chair Abenda, and also for remembering my name since the previous time I was recognized by you. But what I'm, what I'm hearing here is, is, is a bit of confusion, okay? Because this is a motion to reconsider, which is a very carefully chosen word. Happily, it's not a motion to rescind, because as you know, we've had lots of fun with the motions to rescind lately, so this is a motion to reconsider. But I did hear from our student trustee across the way that, that she wants this motion rescinded, but then I've heard from other people who have spoken already, is that they agree with the, the merits of this motion. They agree with our, uh, pro-life, uh, direction of funds, not, not to direct it to, uh, non-pro-life charities. So, so I, I'm detecting some kind of confusion here, a lack of clarity, trustee Ro himself has said that it's, there's a specific word that, that is causing an issue here and as you know, that this, this motion to reconsider cannot be amended, so it's a straight up or down vote on whether to reconsider and I hope you realize that what that means is that the original motion comes up immediately after this motion carries.
Give me that one again, a lot of stuff.
If this motion to reconsider carries, the original motion comes up tonight immediately after and we're back at ground zero for this entire motion, okay? So what I'm, but, but the point of what I'm saying is, the point I'm bringing up is, is that there's confusion here. There is a, a, a reticent, there's a, there's a sentiment to maintain the merits of the motion, but there's something else that's, that's in the way and we need to deal with that.
All right. Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, trustee Danko is always rattles, rattles my thinking. However, um, I, I understand what he's saying. I just wanted to share that I did discuss this, um, this motion with Oxta, which is our Ontario Catholic trustees, president there, his suggestion was, he says, it's fairly simple, he says, most boards just simply send a letter and this would be perhaps to the reconsideration of, of, of the motion if we get that far, would be to, the stipulation is that whatever monies are being donated somewhere, we simply attach a letter and says, the funds are to be used for A, B, C, whatever it is, as Jane has, has alluded and, and that would take care, I think, of a lot of the confusion and a lot of the issues that our, our students are having. As I understand it, um, the Ontario Catholic Students Association, um, met with the, what, met with the bishop, Burgie, who is the bishop in charge of education and I believe there was some conversation as to, Oxta said, you know, you can pick what you want, who you want to support and perhaps a student trustees can correct me if I'm wrong, and it was the, the Wells for Water, uh, through the, I think through the, the me, to, we. And, I mean, certainly a, a worthy cause and I think this is perhaps where our students are coming from, is they don't want to see a blanket motion that ties their hands from helping people who are less fortunate because as Catholics, and I, I saw that in several of our emails, that's what they're asking for, they're asking to be able to help fellow humans, because that's what we are called to do as human beings, as, as Catholics, as Christians and somehow find a way around, you know, abortion, et cetera, et cetera, which I know we, we're all pro-life, so it, it's just, I think, some semantics and unfortunately, as trustee Ro has alluded, our, our wording is very restrictive for our, our students and our school communities.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Well, thank you. I, I will vote against this motion to reconsider. I think it filled a void in the moral criteria guidelines needed for our fundraising and for financial transparency, where our money's going and whether it's directly or indirectly, each way does support, we have to see what is the outcome, is it death or life? And yes, it is black and white and Pope Francis said yes to life and no to death. And our most fundamental is the right to life, because all other rights can't apply if you're dead. And so if you consider reconsidering this motion, thinking of voting against it, oh, it's still a policy right now, even though it's just one month old, and by saying you want to reconsider it, are you saying it's okay to help fundraise for organizations that support abortion or euthanasia on embryonic stem cell research? Are we saying we don't need this clear moral criteria? Are we saying that it's okay to experiment on unborn babies through embryonic stem cell research? Those are our fellow human beings, the most vulnerable. Or are we supposed to remain bystanders, bystanders when human rights, the right to life are violated? And when you can look back on history, what does it say about the bystander? When you remain silent and indifferent, evil flourishes and people die. Ellie Weasel, Weisel said, to remain silent and indifferent is the greatest sin of all. And the bystander during the Holocaust, we say never again. It's always the right time to do the right thing, could be complicated, could be new and change, but it's for the, our fellow human being as the most vulnerable. People today look back at World War Two and wonder why no one did anything for the people being murdered by the Nazis. They wonder why so many people, not just Germans, but even citizens in occupied territories, did little or nothing to protect the activities at Auschwitz Dachau, to protest the activities at Auschwitz Dachau or the rounding up of Jews in France. We must not be bystanders to today's gross violations on human life through abortion, euthanasia, embryonic stem cell research. In Canada today, in Ontario, in Halton right here, a Holocaust is happening and it's called, these violations against life, against, that's abortion, euthanasia, and when are we going to say never again? And I, I would really like to thank all the letters that we got from the community, excellent letters of support and it points out that the community is behind this motion.
Thank you, thank you very much, trustee Carabella. Uh, trustee Trites? Thank you. Thank you very much, trustee Carabella. Trustee Tritz?
I'd like to answer what I've been hearing, and I've heard it myself here at this board, a note at large about maybe having a side letter or sidebar about asking our funds to be put in a direction that we can agree with. But I think the reality is that once you give the money, it's impossible to control. This can never be guaranteed, taking our money, saying, "Don't put it here, but do put it there." This can never be guaranteed. With the money flow and the trickle-down effect, this is hopeful, wishful solution and thinking at best. It's convoluted, it'll be non-transparent, and in the end, it'll be unworkable. If time and effort is going to be spent in pursuing, I would call them a side letter or sidebar agreements, to segregate our Halton Catholic District School Board funds and stream only into acceptable parts of a given charity, there'll be no scrutiny and transparency. And in terms of the time and the effort spent to pull these agreements together, we should be putting it into scrutinizing initially all our charities and nonprofits that either fall within our guidelines, or they do not, and we can keep that list current. Halton Catholic District School Board not only needs to keep this resolution, but as well, we need to be seen to be working within the spirit of the resolution. It'll end up being lost in time and red tape if we start segregating our funds. It just won't be sustainable to be out there that we're going to segregate our funds. Oh, yes, we promote, we give to United Ways, sorry, to United Ways, I'll just use them because they're kind of ubiquitous. We give to United Ways, oh, but only in a certain portion. That's not the spirit. We need to be seen to do the right thing. It's so important that we model correct in our righteous giving with our school-generated funds. We need to model it to our students, and we need to model it to all other institutions and generally at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Perhaps my first question to trustee Rowe is, from, with whom were you speaking? You said you were speaking to certain people. There was a letter that came in from a lawyer, who was also an Oakville rape parrot, and he was asking you through his letter, had you been influenced by the letter from Oecta or anyone at Oecta? So I just ask you to state on the record that that isn't the case. And secondly, my question to the students representing hundreds of voices. If you know that the organization that you are currently supporting does support abortion and does have maternal planning clinics in Kenya and other places in the world, how can you continue to support that if you know that to be the case that they do fund abortions? I think that's a scandal for yourselves to know that and to still support them, and ask that we change our policy that's in place to continue to allow you to do that. But I think that's, if you know that to be the case, why you would argue on its behalf.
Trustee Ingrid, you wish to respond?
Well, I would just like to say that I, and I don't think any of our students would want to support abortion or any of the items that are listed in this motion. I think that the spirit, as I agree that the spirit of the motion is in the, in good spirit. I think what we're asking for here as students is the opportunity to help in the other domains. We want to help the students that sick kids and not the, we don't want to fund the abortions. And I don't think, I can speak, I can't speak for all students, but I think that we are just asking for the opportunity to help. And I strongly agree with the points that trustee Ian Tomasi and trustee Michael's brought up of ensuring through letters that our funds don't go towards that things, but that we still have the opportunity to help and support the items that organizations are helping for outside of these items that we, these points that are brought up in the motion that we can all wholeheartedly agree that we don't want to support. So I don't know if Anna Maria wants to comment on the...
Trustee Anna Maria?
If I could add on to what Ingrid eloquently said. I would like to clarify that Ingrid and I first and foremost represent the students' voices, and everything that we had said at tonight's meeting was coming directly from our senators. We don't have any personal agenda we would like to push, and that's we're only here as a voice for them.
Thank you. Trustee Rowe?
My answer to trustee Quinn is no.
Anyone else wish to speak to this? Otherwise, I will read the resolution that passed the board on January sixteenth. Trustee Carabella?
Can I just make some closing remarks? Are we going to make some closing remarks?
Trustee Rowe's reconsidering, so... One minute, trustee Carabella.
Okay, right to the chase. If the one billion, one billion, one billion babies aborted worldwide, or the five that are killed today in Halton could vote for this motion, how would they vote? Ronald Reagan said, "I notice everyone who is pro-choice is already born." So I'm asking to vote against the motion to reconsider, to keep the policy as it is, to vote for the unborn, the aged, and those threatened by euthanasia, say no to experimentation on unborn children when donations go to embryonic stem cell research, to keep this motion, keep this criteria, keep this policy. Don't be a bystander. Take a stand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to vote to reconsider. Was there somebody else? Trustee Rowe, did you have something? I didn't think you did. No, okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam Director. So are we going to reconsider the motion, and I will read, I'm sorry, the resolution, and I will read that to you just to remind you. The following motion passed on January the sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, number twenty-nine slash eighteen, "Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits", moved by H. Carabella, seconded by S. Tritz. Whereas on January the nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Pope Francis wrote to the participants of the March for Life in France, "Let's say yes to life and no to death." And whereas, "Donations are ways of asserting our yes and our no for or against institutions which support or violate the upholding of the sanctity of life from conception to natural death. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board, HCDSB, because it is a Catholic institution, will not provide or facilitate any financial donations to any charities or nonprofits that publicly support either directly or indirectly abortion, contraception, sterilization, euthanasia, or embryonic stem cell research. For the purposes of this motion, public support for the issues listed above, i.e. abortion, contraception, et cetera, is not support when privately expressed, but is support when publicly expressed on a website, in press material, or found in some other public area. Be it further resolved, the Director of Education will provide a list of all charities and nonprofits which benefit from financial donations from the board by the board meeting of February the twentieth, two thousand and eighteen." And I believe the director has done that, because we have that. Yes. All right, so are we ready for the vote? And the vote is basically, yes?
I'm sure the vote is to reconsider then.
Yes, yes, to reconsider first, yes. So are we ready for the vote? Yes.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
So if we vote in favor, we are voting in to reconsider?
To reconsider, then we're going to, it's as though it's coming back to us for the first time. All right? Okay, so then we start looking at it again, okay? All right, trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Tritz?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Thank you. Okay, well, I would be, what am I? I'm in favor of reconsidering, so that would be a five-four? Okay, five-four, in favor of reconsidering. All right, so we start again, correct? All right.
Madam Chair, is it clear that you're casting a vote in the event of a tie?
It's a tie.
In the event of a tie, the motion to reconsider is defeated.
I'm sorry?
In the event of a tie, the motion to reconsider is defeated.
No, the chair breaks the vote.
You're casting a vote, okay.
Yes, yes, yes. The same motion that I've just read. All right. Perhaps we could consider putting this extra page to give consideration. Has been suggested, I think trustee Michael brought it up first, when we look at everything. All right, so I guess you don't need me to do this again, do you? You're okay?
Madam Chair, you need a mover and a seconder.
I do, but I don't...
And it's debated, and it can be handled like any other motion.
I know, but I don't really want to read it again unless I have to.
You don't have to read it again, but you need a mover and a seconder.
I will get there.
And then it's debated like it's ground zero.
Thank you. I tell you, I should be on the show. All right, so a mover please, a mover for it. Trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Tritz. Okay, so discussion? Any discussion? No one? Trustee Carabella? Trustee Rowe? Sorry, I don't know who came first. Trustee Rowe come first? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned in my comments, if the motion can be amended, I would vote in favor of it.
No, it has to be the same, the same motion.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This motion can be amended, it's just, back to ground zero. Only the motion to reconsider could not be amended.
Okay, okay.
Because you can't amend the reconsideration. It's either you do it or you don't.
Sounds good.
So this motion is all on the floor, it's wide open again, and if I have the floor, I'd like to keep.
Thank you. All right, so where were we with you, trustee Rowe? I'm sorry? It's finished, thank you. Okay. All right, trustee Danko, did you have anything to add?
Do I have the floor?
You do.
You recognize me. Thank you. Madam Chair, so what I, what I'm hearing here is, like I say, confusion. We need to do our due diligence, okay? I'm hearing a lot of things like this word indirectly is confusing. So what's restrictive about it? What is restrictive about it? What will, what does this motion being in place prevent us from doing today that we did before January sixteenth? That's what I would like to get to the bottom of. That's what I'd like to understand, because I'm hearing that there's fear, uncertainty, and doubt around this table about this motion, and I want to know what it is. I want to get to the bottom of it. I want to know what the concern is.
Trustee Michael, I can answer to. Trustee Michael, go ahead.
Well, I think that through the senators and the students, they're saying, and these are examples that I'm using, not that they have given me, but when a student's lost to suicide, students will be prohibited from raising funds for McMaster Child and Youth Mental Health Programs, for example. Why? Because at that hospital, they might, sorry, it's all over the place here. They might do something in their hospital like tubal lesions. That's against all the rules. So we can't donate to McMaster. So there's a concrete example. You want more? A teacher battling cancer, that happens a lot. Students will be banned from raising funds for the Canadian Cancer Society. Major natural disaster leading to urgent humanization crisis. Students would be prohibited from raising funds for the major first response organizations, the Red Cross, Doctors Without Borders, Oxfam, Save the Children, UNICEF. Together, these organizations have saved hundreds of thousands of lives, and they work every day to improve the lives of the world's most vulnerable people. Jesus didn't say, "Help, but only after you've made sure that they all pass the test." He helped everyone. He helped thieves, prostitutes, whatever. We all know that. But he didn't have tests that everybody had to pass. And I think that's the answer to your question.
I believe that at our last meeting, Christina mentioned that, and I believe it's common with through OCSTA, and Arlene maybe can confirm, that the student trustees across the province are working on wells in Africa. And that is an issue because they do family planning. And that came up as being something that could no longer be supported at the last meeting, I recall that. Okay. Trustee Ian Tomasi?
I'm just going to share that beyond that, if we look at this province-wide, can't speak. If we're looking at it province-wide, our students would be the only ones in the province that would be prohibited from doing that. And it's unfortunate Christina can't be here this evening because she's like our Catholic provincial leader. And it just, we're sort of flying in the face of the rest of the Catholics provincially who are allowing certain movements to move forward. I think if we dissect every institution and every large institution, we're going to find fault with one or the other. And in doing so, we are taking away the majority good. And I think that's where our student trustees are coming from, if I'm hearing them correctly, is that we're tying their hands, they can't help everybody. And a life is a life is a life, and I know, you know, the unborn are the most vulnerable. But is an unborn life, God forgive me on this one, but is an unborn life worth more than a child in Africa who's going to lose, die at one or two years old because they don't have clean water or they don't have water at all? I personally, I'm not going to sit in judgment on these sorts of things, but I can only try and support our students when they say they want to be able to use their own good judgment. And I certainly know that they do nothing with ill intent.
Yes, Christina sends a regret, she's sick tonight. All right, does anyone else wish to speak to this? Because if so, if not, we'll take the vote. Trustee Quinn, and then trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Three, Madam Chair. I think what we're seeing here is on a large scale, not understanding what our faith is and the responsibility that we have as trustees and as Roman Catholics. And just because we don't have training in moral philosophy doesn't mean that we should be giving up what we hold to be true and what the reason that we're here as a Catholic school board and not as a public school board. For trustee Michael to say that it's okay to support funds that, to the Cancer Society that does fund stem cell research, yes, that is wrong, and we shouldn't be funding that. And we shouldn't be funding groups that provide abortion in Africa or anywhere else, regardless of the good work that they're doing elsewhere. That's our role. We're scandalizing our board. We're scandalizing the students who themselves are not aware of the wrong that they're doing. So I'm embarrassed that we, as a Catholic board, vote against this motion. We're going the wrong direction. I think we should be teaching our students proper moral philosophy rather than supporting their ignorance.
Trustee Carabella, then trustee Tritz?
Thank you. There's a lot of, you know, names going around in charities. I've never said one way or another which charity. In fact, we just got the list, and there's been no research done. And we don't even know, like, it seems everyone's concerned some charities and nonprofits may be affected negatively by this criteria of respect for life. But we don't know that conclusive evidence. I've seen a list we got on Friday, but no research as to which charities would be negatively affected and for what reason. Who is willing to say that some of these charities are non-compliant without any research? I'm not willing to say that, that these charities are pro-abortion or experiment without research. I don't think we should base a decision on something we don't know. I would like a staff report that would talk about that list and which ones could be negatively affected.
A staff report?
And a reason.
A staff report will require board approval. Yes?
Through Madam Chair, yes, there's been no research on the list that you get later on in the information report. However, we were going to, somebody, I think it was you, either trustee Tritz or Carabella, talked about an attestation from various charities. And so we, I've been looking into what they call a certification where you would send to the executive director or the president of the charity a compliance, that they are, who they are, what their role is in the organization, and they would have to say whether they were compliant with the motion. So moving forward, I think you could do that, put that attestation, that certification in the policy. and that would help to alleviate the, um, whether or not the charity itself is compliant or not, because they would be saying it and putting their name and the date in writing.
Thank you, trustee Tritz.
Through you, Madam Chair, did trustee Danko go, want to go ahead, maybe in direct results? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Through you, Madam Chair, this motion before us is commendable and courageous, and rather than be overturned, it should set a precedent for Catholic school boards and other Catholic institutions. As trustees, it is our duty to exercise governance and stewardship, to exemplify and promote Catholic values through our leadership and right into our schools. Through exercising our governance and stewardship, this motion shows that we practice what we preach, and literally, we contribute our monies where we believe or say our faith is. This is a good opportunity for our students to learn that not all charities are created equal. They're not created equally. While charitable institutions may do some good work, we in good faith cannot dismiss nor support the dishonorable work that they may also be doing. There are many honorable and worthwhile causes to support, which value and respect life and everything that they do. Um, I'm also, I'm aware through correspondence, and I would also add too, we're getting a lot of correspondence from our stakeholders, our parents. So far, we've just been speaking about students, and it's not that that's important, but parents and our other stakeholders have been, as we know, responding as well. I think, and I thank those who have corresponded, uh, with myself and all other members of the board and staff, um, I think the concern, and I would say a misplaced concern, is about losing or changing what already we do have in place. However, I would say that this is about gaining, and winning, and placing our monies in the right direction with life-affirming, affirming charities and nonprofits. And I'm sure there's no shortage of either within our Haltman community or outside about these agencies. I seconded the motion for the upholding of sanctity of life, and I'll stand by my yes. Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, uh, trustee Danko?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Chair Rabenda. Um, I, I would be very disappointed if we decided to scuttle this motion on hearsay and not on any evidence. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of people saying, oh, it will prevent us from doing this, our hands are going to be tied, but this is all anecdotal, uh, opinions, there's no evidence. Like, where's the evidence that such and such's charity is, uh, doesn't meet this standard? Uh, or doesn't, uh, fulfill Catholic morality and what we should be supporting? I mean, we do due diligence for everything around here. We vet everything. We don't hire an architect, we don't do business with anyone unless they demonstrate competence, unless they fulfill their, uh, their description, that they, that they meet our standards for everything. We're picking a new benefits provider, do they meet our standards? Yes, they do, then we hire them. How could, how on earth could we consider scuttling this motion on hearsay? I think that trustee Carabella's brought up a good point, that we need more evidence, we need, and we also need to work out some details about the process behind this, because, uh, Director Dawson has brought up the fact that there is a possibility of an att- attestation, others have talked about attaching a letter. Um, you know, uh, the problem with the letter, though, you know, is, would you, uh, not vet who you're, you're dealing with? Would you want to just go on hearsay, or say, you know, here's your money? I mean, the, the nature of funds is if you give someone money to do project X, then that free ups, frees up all their money to do project Y. So, uh, you're, you're, you're materially cooperating in evil in some of these, uh, in some of these projects. Um, do you really want your hands to be tainted by, by such actions? I mean, I'm, I'm moving that we postpone this motion to the first meeting in April upon the delivery of a staff report that answers a lot of these questions. And we need to agree on some of these questions that we're asking here tonight, is to do the due diligence on the organizations on the list, and where is the evidence? Because I don't want to withdraw support to these organizations if they, if, if they don't do these things either. I mean, I don't want to stop building wells in Africa, so why should we? Well, why don't we know? Why don't we find out for sure whether they do this or not? But rather than anecdotally bandying about certain ideas, oh, they might, they're, we're going to do this, well, why would we do this blindfolded? Can the director provide a report? Can the staff repor- provide a report that answers these questions, that looks into these charities? Pick fifty of them? And decide, and, and, and write an abstract on each one, a synopsis of what they do, and if there's any evidence that they, in their financial statements or on their websites, that they do this work? And then we can move forward with, with clear thinking and actual evidence.
That will require, um, a motion, a resolution of the board, and it will also require the, the hiring of extra staff. Uh, trustee Michael, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying that's what it will include. Trustee Michael, then trustee Rowe.
The first time we did this, um, Director Dawson said, so if I'm understanding correctly, trustee Carabella, you want a list? And that's exactly what you're talking about, but everyone said no.
We have a list.
Yep, but it's not a good enough list?
Now they want an abstract, is that what you want?
Chair, Chair Rabenda, there is doubt. There is doubt created about everyone. We haven't got certainty. We have a list, but now the problem is doubt about these organizations, whether they do or don't, whether they com- whether they are fulfilling, or they contravene our Catholic teachings or not. So to eliminate the doubt, we need more information.
Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, uh, trustee Danko, for illustrating perfectly my concern with this motion. It's, it's poorly conceived, it doesn't, um, really come to the point of what we're looking at. Nobody knows what it's supposed to be doing, what's supposed to be happening, what's not supposed to be happening. Uh, trustee Carabella herself said, you know, she's not sure whether this is affected or not affected. Well, I suggest that the motion, um, either be withdrawn, or amended, or just, um, voted down, and, uh, and bring it back with some careful consideration, bring it to policy committee, work through it, and, and then come up with something that is clear to everyone. Thank you.
So you're suggesting it goes to policy, we, um, we basically postpone it and put it to policy? You wanted to go to policy first?
Chair Rabenda, point of order?
Yes.
I did make a motion to postpone till the first meeting in April, pending a staff report, and you did not look for a second.
I didn't hear you make a motion, I'm sorry.
I did, I proposed we move this, I moved that we, that we postponed this to a specific time.
I thought you had a suggestion. Okay, um, all right, you've got a motion, okay, he's got a motion on the table, all right, a second, uh, please. Yep.
I second that motion.
It's a postponement, yeah, it's a postponement. He's made a postponement to the motion. Uh, do we have a second for that postponement?
Yes.
Trustee Quinn, you're seconding the postponement. Does anyone wish to talk to the postponement? Vice Chair Murray.
So, I, I'm going to speak to it, I'm going to speak to it in generalities, because, uh, I, I don't, this is a, this, this board is a perfect example of why maybe we don't need school boards anymore. Uh, like, all we do is talk about the exact same subjects again and again and again, and, and, and we, we don't move forward on, on anything. Uh, we've had this motion come up in multiple iterations al- already. So, let's, let's either approve the motion today, or defeat it, and if you, and, and, and if you want something passed, well, do the legwork, talk to all your colleagues, see what makes sense from a consensus point of view, and then bring it to the board again. But, but the idea we're gonna, we're gonna push this to, uh, uh, another meeting in April is just one more example of things we keep, we keep pushing off.
Thank you, there is a postponement on the floor, and we are going to bring this to an end, because we're beginning to look a little tired. Um, so are we going to vote on the postponement? Everybody okay with that? All right, uh...
Chair Rabenda, if I may add.
Yes, you may.
Uh, we, we supported this motion. There's clearly a desire amongst this board to, to uphold our Catholic teachings, but something's in the way. I mean, the, 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 the desire is here to, to uphold our Catholic teachings. We passed this motion once already.
Yes, and we're, we're looking at it again. All right, uh, last one, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Um, just a rebuttal to trustee Murray. Uh, this is a, a move forward. Right now, we have twelve million dollars of funds in our little corner of the world that are out there with absolutely no guidelines. And picking up on what trustee Danko said, we have policy, we have procedure, we even tell our kids what kind of shoes they can wear. Twelve million dollars out there with no guidelines, and it's only the first iteration. We brought a motion, something like this, up in December. It's worth pushing forward, and we are moving ahead.
Thank you, I'm ready to go for the, um, Arlene.
Sorry, Madam Chair, but, uh, through you to the director. Uh, I know we have mission and vision, and we have policies in place. Could you just, uh, speak to trustee Tritz's comment that we have no direction? Because my understanding is that principals look at these lists on a semi-regular basis. So if you could just tell me.
Yes, the schools have to develop a school-generated plan, so regardless of how they're raising money, or who they're raising money for, they have a plan that gets posted on their website, uh, in the school year. Um, whether they use twelve million dollars, uh, completely for charities, or whether they're using that money to support, um, some extra, uh, equipment for the yard, or for the gym, that's what the twelve, that's what they use their school-generated funds for, and part of school-generated funds is, goes into charitable donations.
All right, we really have to move along. I'm sorry? Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, point of order, I'm sorry, we cannot take comments. It's, this is the very last one, but make it quick.
Thank you for your generosity, for your charity and your generosity. I would just say, um, that may be true what Director Dawson said, and it is, but we're talking about taking the governance and the stewardship at this level for all the schools.
Thank you.
That's a responsibility here.
Okay. We're voting on the postponement till April? First meeting in April? On a staff report through the director. All right, uh, trustee Quinn. Trustee Anna Maria.
In favor.
Trustee Rowe.
Opposed.
Trustee Danko. Vice Chair Murray.
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Oh, okay, uh, so I'm opposed. That's, that's the same. It's not postponed, so we're back to the motion. We're back to the motion. All right, so the motion, uh, do you need me to read that motion out again? I'll do it if, if you feel you need it. Yes?
Chair Rabenda.
Yes. Thank you.
May I have the floor?
Um, you've had the floor considerably, I was going straight to the vote, because if I give one the floor.
No, we're now, we're debating, we're debating the motion again.
All right, debate quickly.
Give people a chance.
Debate quickly.
You opened this meeting by saying that you wanted this discussed, and you wanted to get to the bottom of it, and we, there, there's no evidence why this motion ties the hands of anyone giving money to that list of charities that the director, uh, produced. So you're going to scuttle this motion based on, on what? There's, there's no evidence. I mean, I, I don't know what McMaster University does, what the hospital does, I don't know what they do there, other than surgeries, or care for people who are sick. I don't know that. I have no idea. Where's, where's the evidence? Where's the evidence of any of the charities? I mean, what is everyone afraid of this motion for?
Student trustees have told you their concern.
What, what is the concern?
Their concern, and actually, it was brought up last meeting, uh, from one of our trustees, I won't say any further, but, uh, that the, the students are working on wells in Africa, and the organization also supported Planned Parenthood, and therefore, that organization would not be acceptable to us anymore, even though they're doing the wells. That was the comment, and I think that's what went back to the student trustees.
So, Madam Chair, that goes back to my question. What is the evidence of that? And if that's the case, if that happens to be true, then what would you do about it?
Thank you. Okay, um, trustee Carabella, you had something to say? We'll go around the table once. Trustee, uh, Danko's had his, uh, say, and we appreciate that. Trustee Carabella?
Okay, well, I can answer, not answer that, but I can talk about that, and, and trustee, uh, Ian Tomasi also mentioned what, what was her choice, if she had to make, and we're, we're looking at wells in Africa. Uh, there are other places that do wells that are not linked to abortion or contraception, uh, in Africa. And yes, if you have in your hand, um, a baby and other work, that's too much work, or you like this, you still have to look at the fundamental right of that baby to be born. And, you know, there's that point in the Bible that says we don't know what heaven and earth are going to be like till we get there, and we talk about the dignity of the person, and, you know, how special and respect. But I, I wonder if we really, really know the dignity and worth of a human life.
Trustee Ingrid. You could, you don't have to comment if you don't want to, we can just go around the table.
Uh, can I have four minutes to formulate my thoughts? Can I come up?
You can. Trustee Intomasi?
I think I've said all I have to say, Madam Chair, and I, I, again, I just want to clarify, I'm not saying one life is better or worse than any other life.
Thank you. Trustee Michael? Thank you. Trustee Tritz?
The unborn life is worth everything.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murray? Thank you. Trustee Danko's, uh, spoken. Trustee Murray? I'm sorry, trustee Rowe?
Um, I've already, uh, made my point that, um, the motion, uh, is, um, confusing, and, um, needs, uh, needs to be, um, developed better, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anna Maria? Okay. Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think that Mr. Trustee Rowe should have voted to support trustee Danko's, uh, advice to get a, a report from staff, but I will be supporting this motion again.
Thank you. Trustee Ingrid?
Um, so, I think we can all, we've all mentioned several times around the table, um, how much merit this motion does have. Um, but I would like to see, uh, a re- this motion amended, or changed in policy uh, to reflect more the ideas of trustee Michaels and trustee Ian Tomasi, of having a, um, a letter in place, uh, making sure our funds go to the right things, but not completely taking out an organization, um, based on, based on something like that. And, uh, that's why I will be, uh, voting a, against this motion.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for the vote, you want me to read it again? No, all right. Uh, so, um, basically, uh, the motion was that, um, oh, I can't. We'll give you, we'll give the director a minute to pull it back up, since it's not here. Okay. Okay, once more. Whereas on January nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Pope Francis wrote that participants of the March for Life in France, "Let's say yes to life and no to death," and whereas donations are ways of asserting our yes and our no for or against institutions which support or violate the upholding of the sanctity of life from conception to natural death, be it resolved at the Halting Catholic District School Board, HCDSB, because it is a Catholic institution, will not provide or facilitate any financial donations to any charities or nonprofits that publicly support either directly or indirectly abortion, contraception, sterilization, euthanasia, or embryonic, embryonic stem cell research. For the purposes of this motion, public support for the issues listed above, i.e. abortion, contraception, et cetera, is not support when privately expressed, but is support when publicly expressed on a website and press material, or found in some other public area. Be it further resolved that the Director of Education will provide a list of all charities and nonprofits which benefit from financial donations from the board by the board meeting of February the twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Trustee Carabella asked for support of her motion, that in order that we do not fund thing. I don't have to read that, no, that's further resolved. Nope, I'm just going down into the text. Okay, so that's that. All right, so, do we have a mover and a second on that? Did I get one, or no? Yes, okay, thank you, Rosie, I'm glad you're there. All right, so the vote. Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria.
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe.
Opposed.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Vice Chair Murray.
Opposed.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Um, in one moment, yes. Let's just get the vote. Oh, no. All right, then, I, I guess I'm opposed. We'll look at this again, though. Yes, go ahead.
If you're the mover of a motion, can you vote against it? Because we, we had that in our parliamentary class.
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe, I believe we had that once before, and the question came up, and you can vote against something. It's just simply to get the topic on, on the table. Once it's on the table, then the vote can go anywhere.
You can second to get a motion on the table, and you can vote against that motion if you second, but not if you move. The mover has to vote in favor of the motion.
I hope that that's not the end of this thing, because I, I do think it's a very important issue. And maybe we can come back to it at some time, when we have maybe a letter, an attestation at some time in the future. So, thank you very much. We do need to move on now. That was a good conversation. And now, it's, let me just, excuse me?
Well, Jane moved it.
She seconded the motion. Who moved the motion? Rosie? Trustee Trites, okay. All right, we're still in action items, believe it or not. And we are now at eight point three, which is salary grid for senior officers. Trustee Quinn?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I was hoping to, to move this motion today, but have been advised that it may have some legal consequences, and it should be discussed in camera. So I'm asking to, to, to remove that motion today. So I will not be bringing it forth.
Thank you very much. Moving on to corporate donations to schools. Superintendent Nagoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with the Board operating policy, I dash twenty-one, Corporate and Community Investment in Education, attached to your report, we are seeking Board approval to accept a donation in kind for hard maple threads from the ship, from shipwreck stairs, valued by an independent party at fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. The wood threads would be used by secondary students in the shops, and there has been a high interest by at least three of our secondary schools in those about three hundred and fifty pieces of maple threads. And myself or Erin would be happy to take any questions trustees may have. We would ask for your approval to accept this donation.
Thank you. A mover? Trust, trustee Intomasi, seconded by? Trustee Michael, any questions to the donation? None? Trustee Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is an in-kind donation, so they'll be receiving a charitable receipt?
Yes. I'm sorry. Trustee Danko?
Chair Abada, I just find it kind of ironic that we're being asked for permission to accept a donation, but we can't give permission to, we don't need to approve anything that we donate. I'll be supporting the, the motion.
Thank you. It's important that we bring these things to the Board, because, you know, sometimes have been accidents happen, and, not in our Board fortunately, but, you know, there are accidents that happen with donations sometimes. Anyone else want to speak to this, or can we do the vote? Uh, nobody? Okay. The vote then, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Vice Chair Marie? Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Heading right. Okay, eight point five, Bishop Paul Francis Redding, Catholic Secondary School, addition approval to proceed with school capital planning. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. This report was presented at the February sixth Board meeting, to approve the commencing of the capital planning and selection of an architect for the Bishop Redding School Edition. We are still awaiting the funding letter, the official funding letter, from the ministry, but we, which we now expect to see in early March. But knowing how many portables we have on site at Bishop Redding, we need to get moving as soon as possible. So, we set this report up to defer the, the specific budget amount and the borrowing bylaws, which are, have very specific amounts in them, which we will wait until we get the funding letter from the ministry. But seeking approval on the architect selection, so we can get moving on, on the design work for the, for the project.
Thank you. How many portables are on site today?
Thirty-four.
Thank you. So, I need a mover. Are there any questions for Superintendent Merrick? No? All right, so, we're going to take this one by one, because we know what happens when we put things together.
Just the one down here, Diane. This is coming back later.
Oops. Just the one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The very bottom one, please, after conclusion. Resolved that Halting Catholic District School Board authorized staff to proceed with the selection of an architect and the school capital planning process for Bishop Paul Francis Redding, Catholic Secondary School Edition Project in the town of Milton. Move by. Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Ian Tomasi. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. And now we are turning the page, and we are on to executive compensation, I believe, which is me. Give me a moment to get the page. Eighty-five. Okay. All right. We've had considerable discussion on this particular issue, and I don't think we need to go through it again, unless you tell me otherwise. So I'm going to read the recommendation that is listed on page eighty-five. Okay. First of all, yes, I guess I have to read it before I get a mover. Whereas on September the twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen, the Halting Catholic District School Board voted to submit the proposed HCDSB Executive Compensation Program to the Ministry of Education, with a proposed maximum rate of increase of two point six percent of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen pay envelope. Whereas on November the second, two thousand and seventeen, the Halting Catholic District School Board received approval from the Ministry of Education to post the proposed HCDSB Executive Compensation Program on the Board's public website. Whereas, in accordance with the broader Public Sector Executive Compensation Act two thousand and fourteen, and Ontario Regulation three zero four dash sixteen, the Halting Catholic District School Board posted its proposed executive compensation program on the public website for a period of one month, November eighth to December twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, and provided a mechanism to receive stakeholder feedback on the proposed executive compensation program. Whereas stakeholder feedback was not in support of the Board's proposed executive compensation program. Whereas the Ministry of Education Directive provides in section five point three, that after the public consultation, the designated employer is responsible for addressing relevant feedback in its proposed executive compensation program. Whereas the Ministry of Education Directive provides in section five point four, that the designated employer must submit its proposed executive compensation program to its overseeing ministry, along with the summaries of the public feedback received, and any changes to the program since the government completed its review in step, step two. Be it resolved that the Halting Catholic District School Board authorized staff to provide the Ministry of Education with a summary of the feedback received through the executive compensation stakeholder process- Eighty-five, where's my eighty-six? I haven't got it there. Eighty-six. That the Halting Catholic District School Board submits to the Ministry of Education a revised executive compensation program, reflecting an amendment to the proposed maximum rate of increase to five percent of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen pay envelope. That the Halting Catholic District School Board develop and approve salary grids for superintendents and director of education, based on the MRSA Ministry of Education-approved executive compensation framework at level four. That the executive compensation program designate a certain portion of its funding envelope for the purpose of awarding executives who achieve specific measure, measurable strategic objectives, as prescribed by the Board's strategic plan. That's where it sits right now. Okay, can I have a mover? Trustee Rowe, seconded by? Nobody's seconding it? Seconding it? Hmm? Oh, it's my motion. Okay, then, I guess mark your second, seconding it. Okay. I'm putting it on because I spoke. Okay. All right. Uh, yes.
Madam Chair, so I have an amendment, if it's on the table now?
Yes.
I want to scratch five percent of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen pay envelope, and change it to two point six percent.
Two point six percent, okay. Okay. Um, hmm? Seconder? Yeah, seconder? Do we have a seconder? I'll put it down. Uh, seconded by trustee Danko? All right. Any questions to the amendment? Okay, ready for the vote on the amendment? It now sits the same resolution, the same motion, but with a two point six instead of a five. So we're going to take the vote, yes? Okay. Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. Trustee Anna Maria?
Upstain.
Trustee Rowe?
Opposed.
Trustee Danko? Sir? Vice Chair Marie?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
Opposed.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you. Oh, no. Okay, then I'm opposed to the increase, I guess. Okay.
You're opposed to the increase?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm opposed to the decrease, the two point six, two point six, the decrease, I guess. Okay. So it's tied, and I have to break the tie. Okay. All right, so we're back to the five percent. Does anyone else wish to make a?
I, I do. This entire thing is, is out of order. We voted on this twice as a Board.
I'm just, we've had an amendment, Paul.
That, that's fine. Now we're back to the main motion.
Yes.
This entire thing's out of order. This Board voted on this twice before, and it even states in our bylaws that we cannot vote on it again, after you have the rescinding of, the attempted rescinding of it. So by, by putting this in front of the Board, we are, we are breaking our bylaws. And this should not be on the agenda. This Board has given clear direction to the Director of Education to provide to the Ministry of Education on numerous occasions, and that was not acted upon.
Paul, this, this was given to us, you didn't say anything about this before. You're happy about this two point six?
Uh, in camera, uh, in camera, I was, I was, I specifically stated that, that this is not following the rules of the Board and the bylaws of the Board, so-
This is where we stand with this particular report, and we've got to get this through at whatever percentage we decide to make. All right, do I have any other? We have refused the two point six. That's the title. Okay, do we have any other recommendations?
It's a discussion item. So, uh, to trustee, trustee Quinn, or any other trustees around the table, do we think that it should be five percent, or is there a different number that would be more appropriate?
Uh, if that was to me?
Yes, please.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. If perhaps the Director could give us what the number would be to make us whole on the, on the salary that you approved, the salary raises you approved in the last session?
I haven't calculated that, trustee Quinn, if, if the, I mean, as of September first. Yeah, I haven't done that calculation.
I just, we're going to postpone this motion. Yeah, we don't have, if we don't have the answer to that question, and- We need more information, Chair. We voted on this twice before, then I would like to make a motion to defer this into a future date.
Um, anyone else? Um, you want to make a motion to defer this to a future date?
Yep. April. Well, we already, we already sent it in.
Can I, um, just, just as a comment to trustee Quinn, I would say five percent would be, would suffice. That would be my opinion, but I don't, I wouldn't say more. I, I can't say less, to be for sure. But that would be, that would be my guess, right at this point.
But to clarify, there, there actually is a specific number. We, we just need to work it out on, 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 on the grids. So I would, I would just change my motion to defer to a specific date, once we have this information for trustee Quinn. Once we have the information for, for, correct, correct.
I thought this was supposed to be submitted. It was submitted already. And you keep- Yes, I know that. What, what about the, what about bringing it back? I just, like, this has nothing to do with the point, but what about bringing things back over and over when it's against our, our bylaws? I just don't understand, like, why-
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Michael. It's part of the process for the executive compensation framework, that we have to bring it back until you approve a final program, and, and respond to stakeholder feedback, and submit that. So it seems like it keeps coming back, but it's, it's a step that we have to do, in order for this process to be completed.
Why can't we do it the day of the policy meeting, at the same time? Just save an extra travel. I don't, we're already here, just in and out. Madam Chair, through you, can, Director Dawson, can you tell us why you're recommending the Monday the twenty-sixth? As opposed, do you need extra time, or?
I, I would need to, I think more than one day if I have to submit this for that evening, because it is due on the twenty-eighth. And I would want us to send it the day, you know, the day before, instead of being the day of, and then not being received.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, what was trustee Quinn's question? What does it mean to make us whole?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I understand that the two point six percent would not be enough in our budget to, to cover the cost of salary increases that were recently put through on our budget. So what would be the percentage amount for the increase that would require us, that would pay for the, the salary increases that were put through by the Director recently?
So would that be, I guess I'm not understanding. What, what increases are we talking about? The two point six percent on top of the grid? The two point six percent on top of the grids that were in two thousand and ten, eleven? So is it two point six percent increase to that? Then what?
He means in September twenty seventeen.
Yes, but that is a decrease in the ranges, um, so if we're talking about an increase, I'd like to understand what is making us whole? Is, is the percentage increase to the pay envelope that will bring us to the two thousand and ten, eleven grid levels? Or is it a percentage of increase to the ten, eleven and, or eleven, twelve, uh, grid increases?
Through you, Madam Chair, I, I believe the, if I understand trustee Quinn correctly, the question he is asking is what percentage increase would we require to the ministry envelope based on the June pay grouping, envelope at that time, to allow the board the necessary funding to pay the current complement of superintendents, the pay grids that are in their contract? Without creating a deficit situation, I believe that's the question that trustee Quinn is asking.
Correct, without, without a deficit.
Little time to calculate this, all right? So let's, so let's just do a little thinking here. Um, today is the twentieth, tomorrow, uh, there is assumption, right? Thursday is the CYO, I don't know what we're doing Friday night, we must be doing something. Uh, Monday is, um, nothing? Tuesday, of course, we're here, so I guess it, Monday? Can we, you can't do Monday? Okay, um, any other suggestions? Would it take that long? Have to be Tuesday? Okay, well, we can move the director meeting if we had to to, yes?
I, I'm not requesting this meeting, uh, trustee Marais has, it's been, he put a motion for it, it hasn't been seconded. I'm happy to vote right now.
You're happy to vote? Vote on what? Okay, but we have, we have trustee Marais has a motion, uh, to postpone it and we're trying to find a date. I understand what you're saying. Is there a seconder? Pending an appropriate date, is there a seconder for trustee Marais' motion? Trustee Carabella, you're seconding that motion? Okay, so we need a date, put, can we put down the twenty seventh? It'll have to be the twenty seventh. So, um, vice chair Marais, could you just repeat your amendment, please, or your motion? Staff have enough information? Hmm, we're good?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, so that's fine. So we've got the motion on the table right now? To postpone? Yep, all right, so we're ready for the vote? All right, I know trustee Quinn, you're interested in moving on, but we've got to do this, um, so your vote, please?
Opposed.
Thank you, trustee Anna Maria. Trustee Row.
Opposed.
Trustee Danko.
Favor.
Trustee, vice chair Marais.
In favor.
Uh, trustee Trites.
Opposed.
Trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Intimasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
A tie? All right, um, hmm? Back to the main motion. Okay, either vote for it, vote against it, vote something else. All right, so the main motion, yes?
Uh, I'd like to make an amendment to the main.
An amendment to the main motion?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to make it, I move from five to, uh, three point, uh, eight percent.
Okay, splitting the difference between two point six and five, three point eight.
And that will, and that will solve, uh, that will solve the issue of the, uh, any issue.
Being whole, okay, okay, okay.
It's a compromise solution, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, Susan, it's a compromise solution, uh, to get us to where we need to be right now so that, uh, all trustees are satisfied of that perspective, but also keep in mind that we, um, are not creating, uh, um, well, frankly, we're, we're, we're not creating unsustainable raises for this board. Uh, if we were to continue the five percent out past three years, um, it would, uh, we're, we're the government of Ontario, uh, has not, has not promised funded, um, it, 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 it's, it's a compromise to be reasonable to the taxpayers of Ontario, uh, and, and I, and I think that we need to, uh, look very carefully at providing the maximum increase that, that the ministry will allow. By, by allowing, by, by suggesting, by speaking with the ministry, finding out from them, uh, what they would, uh, what they would like, it, it, it means as a board, we're not making any decision, uh, ourselves. Uh, it means there's no point of actually of us having this discussion over a six month period. So I, I would ask to consider the three point eight because it's a compromise that will accomplish the goal of many trustees and some of the motions that, uh, these trustees had on the table, uh, in the past and will also, um, uh, accomplish the goal of being, uh, fiscally responsible to the, uh, to the taxpayers of Halton. Thank you.
Um, Madam Director?
Just to clarify, um, any, any grids that the trustees approved because the funding is only for three years guaranteed, that's the development of a three year grid.
Thank you, so we have, um, an amendment proposed by vice chair Marais for three point eight percent. Do I have a seconder? Okay, sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, uh, trustee Marais, at the beginning, did you say that this three point eight will make us whole in answer to trustee Quinn's? You said that? May I ask how you know, please?
Because we've, we've done the, we've done the math, we've done the math back in September, November with the Excel we've been around, uh, and the two point six percent is not very far off. Uh, it would only require a small reduction, uh, in the, now in a year, once the, once the two point six were to, uh, coming, uh, they would be a whole as, as a next year. We're just, we're just, uh, we're just, uh, increasing it, uh, for, for, uh, uh, next year and, uh, you allow us to move it.
All right, we'll need to confirm that, um, superintendent Nagoy, do you want to say anything?
Thank you. I would need to run the numbers for three point eight, um, I'm not certain it will, uh, allow for, uh, any or perhaps very small increases over, and we're talking about a two thousand and ten, eleven or eleven, twelve grid that hasn't changed since then. So making us whole will, will mean we'll be keeping the two thousand and ten, eleven or eleven, twelve grid. So just to clarify that, even if it sounds like it's a two point six percent or a three point eight percent increase on the envelope because of the freeze, it will not allow to a different grid rate than what by the end of this will be a ten year span. I just wanted to clarify that, so making us whole means you keep a two thousand and ten, eleven grid.
Uh, trustee, did you have a question? No? Okay. Yes, thank you, thank you for reminding me. A seconder for vice chair Marais' motion. Going, going, going. Trustee Carabella, okay? All right, um, any further discussion on that motion? Trustee Intimasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I just want to point out, just to remind, because people, we, we get into these conversations, we keep forgetting, the five percent doesn't mean we have to use the five percent. And so if we want three point eight or whether it works out to four point five or two point six or whatever we're, it is, we can allow the motion to go through because let's not forget we've got our last clause in here that says, um, you know, designate a certain portion of funding envelope for the purpose of awarding executives who achieve specific measurable strategic objectives and we won't be able to fund any of that if we don't have more of the five percent package, recognizing that we aren't funding the five percent package, it is coming from the government and they've committed to that.
Thank you, any other comments on that? Are we ready for the vote? Vote on the amendment, yes, the amendment was three point eight percent. All right, so, uh, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you, uh, trustee Intimasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
Opposed.
Vice chair Marais? Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Trustee Row?
Opposed.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Danko, I'm sorry, trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Thank you. Okay, all right, uh, so we're calling the main motion, you know what you're voting for, um, all right, so we'll start up again. Uh, trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Favor.
In favor? Trustee, my, I'm sorry, vice chair Marais? Uh, trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
Opposed.
Trustee Intimasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Thank you. It passes, thank you very much. Uh, I'm really glad I didn't have to do that one as well. Okay, next item on the agenda, staff reports. Nine point one, Freddie is still awake, two thousand and eighteen municipal election trustee determination and distribution, superintendent Nagoy and Madam Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the, um, uh, population electoral group or the PEG report was circulated on February tw, uh, February fifteen, uh, and our planning services department has analyzed the data and the results have been included in your report tonight. The data supports the same trends as presented previously at the January sixteenth report, information report, whereby there is a number of factors that remain the same in this election as for the past election and namely, the total number of trustees remains at nine. The region does not have any municipalities to be designated as low population areas and the town of Oakville remains the lead municipality. Uh, the PEG report also provides electoral quotients by ward and municipality and in summary, the town of Oakville will be, um, is overrepresented by point five three. The city of Burlington is overrepresented by zero point two eight. The town of Milton is underrepresented by zero point one four, uh, zero point seven one four and Halton Hills is underrepresented by zero point zero nine three, um, as is outlined in figure number two in your report. Appendices I, J, K and L provide a map of the region by ward and electoral, electoral, um, quotient. And at this point in time, unlike in the previous, uh, election cycles, we are, um, the status quo is not an option because we are at the point where we'd be subject to appeal. Um, and, uh, as such, the recommendation in the resolution would be to reallocate, um, a trustee to Milton and approve, uh, various wards, um, by municipality. Fred, however, has brought a couple of options for trustees, uh, consideration and he'll walk you through, um, the wards and the, um, the options for your consideration.
Can you restate that, the status quo is not legally an option to us?
It's not, not legally, yeah, I'm saying the status quo, at this point in time, the status quo would, would put us in a position where we would be, um, we could be challenged and we could be subject to appeal.
Well, we could still make, we could still make that decision if we cared to.
Yes.
Okay, I want that to be clear.
Yes. Madam Chair, Fred would, uh, have some additional details on the, the options that have been walked in.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, so apologies, we couldn't add these as, uh, part of the report initially. The PEG report did come in a little bit late last week. Now, what we've done, uh, as per what Roxanna was pointing out earlier, we tried to redistribute the population, um, by representation in ward, uh, throughout the, uh, the region of Halton to best meet the legislation. Again, we're bringing forward recommendations that would not be subject to appeal. So in this case, we have two options before you tonight, there's option A, which effectively is the, uh, the region of Halton divided by wards and all of the division of trustees are occurring within the boundaries of the municipalities. And then option B presented to you tonight is very similar to option A, however, it also provides an option where there's, uh, some sharing involved between municipal, municipal wards, uh, namely, uh, Milton and Oakville. So to go through, um, just option A here very quickly in terms of what kind of distribution we're looking at, uh, again, Halton Hills will remain pretty much as it is because it already meets the electoral quotient in total of approximately one, so it's very close to a whole number already. Uh, the city of Burlington, again, we've maintained very similar distributions among what's existing today because Burlington already is in the, in a ward-based distribution. For the town of Milton, we have divided it and added an additional trustee. Uh, the way that we've divided the wards is the north and south area, so north being the more established historical Milton as we knew it, uh, ten plus years ago, whereas the south, which we're dividing by Dairy Road, would be the newer, uh, Milton, the one that's, uh, essentially been developed over the past ten, fifteen years, uh, namely the Sherwood, Bristol and Boeing surveys, as well as all the future developments in urban expansion lands. As for the town of Oakville, historically, it has been an at-large, uh, representation. Uh, from what we understood, this was prior to Oakville modifying the wards based on new development. So what we're doing in order to best meet and, you know, show the representation, we're trying to go, we're proposing to go back to ward-based, especially if there's any kind of proposal to share amongst the municipalities. And in this instance here, what we've done is a little bit of, uh, the, the neighborhoods of Oakville is how we've divided them, so we have the south of Q area, we have the west of, um, the, uh, Sixty Mile Creek area, which is Ward Four, which almost has a full representation, which we've combined with the north Oakville area, which right now is still building its representation, it's quite low at the moment, and then we have the, uh, the geographic area combined of Ward Five and Six. So in this case, a lot of our electoral quotients are very near one, a whole number and they're well above, well, they're well above the threshold of what is appealable, essentially. The appeal rights that are under the municipal realm would be if there is an overrepresentation of over point four five, is the way it's calculated, that is found in section ten two of the legislation. So essentially what you do is you look at five percent of the total trustee allocation, which is nine, that gives you point four five. As for option D, what we've done here, and again, as trustee Quinn had inquired at the, uh, January sixteenth, uh, meeting, there is an opportunity for sharing between municipal wards and geographic area, again, with the intent to try to come as close to one as possible as a whole number. And what we've done here is we've combined the south Milton area, um, which is the newer development area, with the north Oakville area, which again is a new development area, so that essentially brings it closer to that whole number at a point eight electoral quotient, which we find is a good balance. Over time, Milton will grow into itself and will have the full representation of two, but right now as a standalone, it's about one point seven. So these are essentially the proposals that we're bringing forward. The resolution, as before, tonight, is set up in such a way where, um, it gives you pretty much the general parameters of what the motion could be going forward at the March sixth board meeting. Uh, it is built around a ward-based system for all three municipalities. Uh, Halton Hills only needing one, uh, trustee doesn't require that section of the resolution. And then the distribution of wards within it, uh, that's, that's up for board discussion. So that's what's before you tonight and we're here to take any questions to this regard.
Thank you, Fred, um, questions, trustee Trites, uh, trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you, Fred and Roxanna, for that presentation. Fred, when we saw this a while back, we were talking simply about trustee distribution and now we have trustee distribution and we have a change in wards, some are wards and some aren't. Do we have to do this or why is this coming up? Yeah, why are we doing two things when the first thing we looked at was just trustee distribution? I'd just like to know, they are two separate issues, right? Can you confirm that?
Through you, Madam Chair, they are one and the same. The reason that we couldn't bring forward the ward-based discussion back at the January sixteenth, uh, report is because the PEG report wasn't available yet, so at that time, what we used is just a general population report, which was just by municipality. So that only so showed what the separate population was and what we've seen based on that was that given the overall population that was in Milton, Oakville, Burlington and Halton Hills, there was a significant under-representation for the town of Milton. And again, unfortunately, at that time, we, we weren't able to go into the ward base. We tried gathering the data early on by M-PAC, they would have it, but they were unwilling to provide it. So we unfortunately had to wait for the PEG report to come out. Now, for tonight, as part of the entire process, um, the ward discussion is part of it, it's, it's part and parcel. Um, albeit that we've historically designated our areas as, our geographic areas for Oakville as a, as a whole. Um, what we're proposing tonight is that there's certainly advantages of going by ward because it's, you're representing your neighborhoods, there's better opportunities for sharing, and other such benefits. Otherwise, the ward-based discussion was never part of Milton because they only had a representation of one. Same with Halton and Burlington has historically always been a by ward. So tonight, as staff recommends, or what the recommendation being brought forward for the next board meeting would be to have the entire board, um, elected by a by ward basis.
Thank you, and through you. So Fred, you've chosen or to look at everything being made by ward as opposed to at-large. Is it conceivable to flip it around and have everything at-large? I know why you did it by ward, but I'm asking, could it be the other way, that everybody be at-large? Uh, Burlington? And Burlington at, at, you know what I'm saying. Can you do it the other way and have it at-large as opposed to every district is a ward? Because we're changing it up. We have some at-large and we have some by ward.
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I guess it is something that can be looked at. Um, again, in the, the legislation, they, they certainly encourage geographic areas that are, you know, represented by, by ward is the way that they show it, but again, the board can define its own geographic areas if they wish. Um, again, there's certainly advantages of having it by ward, and that's why we're bringing it forward. In terms of if you were to look at it by at-large for Burlington, let's say, um, you could simply just add up all the electoral quotients together and that would give you your general number, which is also the same number that's provided in, uh, figure two. So it's, it comes up to the same, but we see that in having a representation of a specific geographic area, at least the constituency can have a direct liaison with the person that, uh, you know, they want to discuss. It's a little bit more direct, a little bit less confusion. And again, there's the, the future sharing opportunities and there, there's a number of things. So again, that's up to the board to look at inside.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, um, the, um, town of Oakville has also been by ward historically. However, when they were, um, municipally, they were determining their boundaries, um, it was elected a, a couple of cycles ago, I think, election cycles ago, that they would go, uh, at-large just until those would be finalized. Now they actually have been finalized, so these are the numbers for consideration.
And just a quick, uh, addition to that, the reason that there was a delay was, uh, more than likely the north Oakville secondary plan area was appealed back in oh-five, oh-six area. So that's what pushed back the whole ward-based discussion for the town of Oakville to just recently being approved in, uh, twenty sixteen, so.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Um, when you say we could be up for an appeal, who would have standing to appeal and what's the requirement for an appeal? And in, uh, I guess, just above the recommendations, number one, you say that the board resolved not to designate a low population area. What is that?
Uh, so the first point then, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, the mechanism for appeal is that it would be a municipality or a jurisdiction that falls within the, the same as our own. So we would have our four municipalities, uh, as well as our region, which would have to pass a motion at their council to appeal the board based on their distribution. The trigger for the distribution is covered in section ten point two of Oreg four twelve slash zero zero, which is in appendix D of your, uh, report. And effectively, the calculation is if you're looking at the electoral quotient and the number of trustees that are representing that area, um, the test is if you're overrepresented by the certain threshold, then you're subject to appeal. That threshold is calculated by taking the total number of trustees, which is nine, and multiplying that by point zero five, effectively five percent. So point four five is the, the variance, whether you're over or underrepresented. So to, uh, Superintendent Nagoy's point earlier, Oakville is overrepresented by approximately point four five, whereas the town of Milton is underrepresented by point seven one. So on two counts, we're, we're, we're pretty much passing that threshold, so we are subject to appeal on that. So they would have up to, um, I forget the exact dates, but until sometime in the month of April to pass a, uh, to, uh, provide notice to the board that they are appealing. And then afterwards, that would go to the OMB, which the OMB would then have to make a decision on this ruling.
Would that likely happen before the October election?
The appeal would need to be resolved prior to that. So there's mechanisms here which require that after the appeal is made, that the OMB will have to review this well before the June, uh, the June timeline, so. Is there a second part of your question? Through you, Madam Chair. A low population area would be something where, let's, here we don't have one, but if we were to go in a more rural area, let's call it, uh, maybe the York region as an example. York region has outlining, um, rural areas that may not necessarily meet the electoral quotient of a whole number of one, but has still that rural population that should have some sort of representation at the board. So what that allows is the board that has that sort of situation could say, albeit that we don't have, you know, a full, a whole number for an electoral quotient, let's call it two, point two five, just for the sake of argument. They can designate that as a low population area so that they do have representation not strictly on the basis of population. And then what that does is the remaining total trustees that are allocated to them are then adjusted based on that factor, uh, for the remainder. So given that we're all so close in terms of that, uh, that distribution, we don't find it necessary to, uh, to allocate one.
I just, um, wanted to say that there are advantages to at-large as well, that I enjoy, um, being available for all the schools representing, being available for, uh, ratepayers, it doesn't matter where you are.
To, uh, school name selection, nine point two, Northeast Oakville Catholic Elementary School, Superintendent Overholt.
To you, Madam Chair. The following report is presented to trustees on the naming of the new Oakville Northeast Ca- Catholic Elementary School. And this comes as a result of the consolidation of the Saint John and Saint Michael School communities that will take place in September of twenty eighteen. Uh, the transition committee that was established for these communities made the decision to initiate the process of school naming according to policy, uh, I dash fifteen. A separate committee was created, uh, and individuals are listed in the report. I want to thank those individuals for their time and commitment to, uh, being on the committee. Initial consultation, uh, was asked for from the communities, uh, to provide input of potential names. The appendix A provides the list of those, uh, names that were submitted. A wide range of names were, uh, provided to us for considerations. The names were then shortlisted by the committee to four names, uh, listed there for you. Archangels, oh, sorry, All Angel, All Saints, Holy Archangels, Saint Michael, and Saint Michael and John. A survey went out to the community and asked, uh, for their top two preferences. And, uh, the survey closed on February twelfth. Um, they were given the name of the four shortlisted names. And the results were there was a total of three hundred and forty votes that came in. And as you can see, uh, it was overwhelming that Saint Michael was the one who received the highest votes. A hundred and sixty altogether, and the all, the rest of the three other names very close in votes. All Saints, sixty-three. Saint Michael and John received sixty, and Holy Archangels received fifty-seven. Uh, so the conclusion is, at this point in time, that policy I fifteen does stipulate that two names, a preferred and an alternate, need to be submitted to the bishop of the diocese for reviewing consideration. So it is at this point that trustees are invited to consider, uh, two of the recommended names for the northeast, the north Oakville Northeast New Catholic Elementary School community. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from trustees? Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, through you to Superintendent Overholt. Um, of the three hundred and forty that voted, do we know which community those votes came from?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't think we have it broken down as to where they come, they came from. We wouldn't be able to decipher that.
Um, if I can continue on from, um, what, uh, trustee Intomasi said. I respect the numbers and, and what it says, but I do hope that Saint John's parents didn't get lost in being the smallest school, if you know what I'm saying.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, part of the process and the committee looked at, and that was part of the reason for allowing for two votes, uh, to be had, so that it wouldn't be just a one vote for a community, which we thought that if it was, then it may be overwhelming that the one community would be dominant in there. So, and it was a suggestion made by parents, in particular, the, uh, the one parent from the Saint John community who brought that forward, um, to the committee, and it was, again, agreed upon by the committee to have two votes for, uh, the potential for two votes. Not everyone did vote twice. There were some people who only did vote one time, um, but, uh, had the opportunity to vote twice.
Any other questions? No? All right, well, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, um, I've got to watch this time. Uh, information items, ten point one, student trustee update. Uh, trustee Anna Maria?
Thank you. Uh, to start off, Ingrid and I wanted to share that we had the pleasure of attending the Off the Echo Board Council Conference in Ottawa this weekend. Uh, we were able to hear from speakers, undergo professional development sessions, media training, and advocacy within the role of a student trustee. We also spent considerable time within the Catholic Board Council Student Trustees discussing upcoming initiatives and had a presentation from Greg Rogers on behalf of we regarding Catholic Education Week initiative to be done throughout the whole province. Uh, moving on with the three pillars. Under believing, uh, many schools are doing prayers in different languages in the morning to promote the idea of multiculturalism. They're, um, also planning Easter initiatives to happen over the next month as we, um, undergo the Lent season and prepare for Easter.
And under the other two, uh, pillars, I'll try to keep it short and mindful of the time. So, um, schools are, uh, still continuing with, uh, different initiatives for Black History Month. Um, at HT, they had a presentation by Carolyn Frost regarding the history behind Black History Month and the stories of the people who fought for what we have today. Um, there are also considerable, um, achievements from our schools in regards to sports. Um, at Assumption, the boys' hockey ended their regular season with a two-one win over Notre Dame. And, uh, quarterfinals begin Thursday against Holy Trinity. And the, uh, Assumption's boys' basketball team won the inaugural HC double-A junior boys' basketball championship, um, over Holy Trinity. At Corpus Christi, the seniors' baller, boys' basketball championship game is happening tomorrow at Saint Thomas Aquinas between Corpus Christi and Holy Trinity. Um, and the, uh, girls' volleyball team won their second straight Ontario All-Catholic championship, um, oh, yep. And, uh, Corpus students are writing, uh, were writing the Waterloo Canadian Compu- Computing Competition. Um, and at JV, a student had qualified for the DECA International Competition in Atlanta, Georgia. And this is their first ever qualifier, so that's really amazing for them. Under the pillar of belonging, um, Holy Trinity has received two international students this, um, the second semester, and they're, um, planning to do international, uh, an initiative with them for Easter. Um, at Assumption, uh, religion classes had their, uh, strove, Shrove Tuesday festivities, um, and included the Best Buddies in these festivities. Uh, and had a pep rally, uh, last week and sold carnations for Valentine's Day as a way to improve everyone's day and, uh, brighten everyone's mood. At JV, um, there, they had their annual Girls' Night in, um, celebration. So it's a wonderful way to, um, promote, um, strong, wonderful women in their community. And at Ca- uh, STA, Kathleen Newman, um, talked about black representation in the media and, um, how they, uh, and she was said to be a very, uh, amazing and powerful speaker. So that's all for the update.
Thank you. Any questions for our student trustees? Great job ladies, as always. I don't know how you do it all. It's amazing. Uh, I'm going to ask in just two minutes for a mover and a seconder, please, for ten o'clock. Trustee Ian Tomasi, trustee Quinn, all in favor? Sure, sure, absolutely. All in favor, thank you. Okay, well, coming back, so, five-minute recess, so. Excuse me, everyone, we have to get back because otherwise we are, we're not going to finish. Thank you. Did I do a mover and a second before past 10 o'clock? I did that, okay, okay, all right. Okay, we're going to have to get started because the time is not there. All right, so, ten point two, Superintendent Cipriano, I think you're next. School educational field trips?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I present the two elementary school field trips and four secondary school field trips that have been approved by senior staff for your information, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on field trips? Thank you. Trustee Intermasi?
Through you, Madam Chair, very quickly, Assumption, is that at the UN? I didn't see a location, so I'm assuming that was Model UN Conference where would that be taking place?
I will pass the question on to Superintendent Overholt. I believe it is not at the UN in New York City.
No, through you, Madam Chair, it is not at the UN. I will have to find out. They have a number of different conferences throughout that they're heading to, to one of them. I'll find out for sure as to where it is.
I was just going to say, that's a bargain at $400. No other questions? Okay, thank you. Construction report, Milton number eight, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, we have the construction update for Milton number eight for January. We are a little behind on the project with the cold temperatures and snow delaying things and making it difficult to get started in most mornings, but the warmer weather in February has helped us catch up a little bit in the first few of February. We have the precast second floor going on down now, which will help us shelter the first floor at least to keep things moving along, so I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions, number eight? No? All right, thank you very much. Ten point four, charities and nonprofits which receive financial donations from the board. Director Dawson?
Yes, you, Madam Chair, this was part of the motion from January 16th whereby I was asked to compile a list of all the charities that our schools support. I know trustees have communicated with you that I sent an email out to all the schools, and they responded back, and the list thereafter, we've gone through it and made sure we didn't have duplications. I thought there was over 100, but it turned out to be exactly 100. And so I presented that in Report 10.4, and I'd be happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions from trustees? Okay, thank you. The long-term, ten point five, 2018 Long-Term Accommodation Plan Update, Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this report outlines the program on renewing our long-term capital accommodation plan. The enrollment projections have been refined since the December submission to the ministry and updated with new development trends. These enrollment trend information sheets will be posted on our board website and communicating to our parents in early March, and a schedule is presented on page two of the report outlining the key dates up to the completion and approval on, at the June 19 meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Nagoy? No? Okay, thank you. Ten point six, Halton Student Transportation Services, 2016-17 Annual Report, Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the Halton Student Transportation Services Annual Report for 2016-17 is attached for your information. It contains key performance indicators for the year, the auditors' report, and the audit of financial statements for the year ended August 31st, 2017. And in total, we represent about 32% of the total HSTS costs and riders, so it transports 11,399 of our students. And Fred and myself would be happy to take any questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Any questions on busing? None? All right, thank you very much. Miss Olney's information, you have attached there, 11.1 minutes of the January 15th, 2018 SEAC meeting. We have a tremendous amount of correspondence, we are very grateful to everyone who wrote to us, and certainly also our student input in terms of the petitions and other correspondence that we have. And I think we are now going back into in-camera. I don't have anything else on my agenda.
I'd like to reconsider at this meeting, according to bylaws. Eight point three, Upholding the Thanksgiving of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits. Yeah, no problem. So, according to the bylaws, we can reconsider at the same meeting we had this discussion a few minutes ago. So, what I would like to do is, as an individual on the prevailing side, I would like to bring up Upholding the Thanksgiving of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits, and vote on that, please. So, I would like to reconsider that. My, the reason for reconsidering it is I think that we had a lot of comments back and forth on this issue, and I feel that we should be supporting it as a Catholic school system. So, let's, let's get it done right now.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think we've had enough debate on the issue this evening, and I think it was contentious enough, and I think we've agreed to bring it back perhaps later and take a better look at it, and I don't think this evening's the time. I think we've exhausted it, and we're running out of time for this evening.
Trustee Trias? Just to be clear, if we vote in favor, we're voting for the motion, right? To reconsider. Right, so, right, okay, I'm glad I made that clear. Thank you.
In favor?
Opposed.
Opposed. In favor?
In favor. Opposed. 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 In favor.
We need a second, so I need it. Trustee Carabella, second to give the motion. Okay, any discussion on that? So, now, if we vote in favor of it, we're back to where we were. Is that correct? All right, so we're back to where we were that we belonged to ourselves. All right, so, trustee Quinn.
Opposed.
Opposed. In favor?
In favor? Opposed. Opposed.
Opposed.
In favor.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion according to bylaw 10.2 to reconsider item 8.6, executive compensation. Correct. I'd like to move that we reconsider 8.6.
With utmost respect to everybody at this table, I don't know what kind of games are being played here, but we are playing with people's lives. We are playing with people's livelihoods. Now, we debated that other, that other matter to death. We've debated this other thing to death. I don't know what's happened in the last five minutes while we had a recess, but frankly, I am disgusted that I have never seen such behavior in a school board, ever. So, you people make your votes, and you do whatever, and you live with your conscience, I've said my piece.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to say anything? All right, so we're reconsidering 8.6. Reconsidering the entire motion. Okay, where is it? What page is that on?
Eighty-three. Yep, I'm just trying to find out where I left it. Okay, page eighty-three? Yep, okay, back to it, okay, it's on page eighty-five of this report that I have.
All right, so we are voting on whether to reconsider 8.6, executive compensation. We've got a mover and a second on that? Trustee Carabella? Sorry, so, the request is to reconsider executive compensation? We have a mover and a second on it, so, in favor? Thank you. Trustee Ingrid?
Opposed.
Trustee Intermasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Michael? You want to bring it back? The 5%, the 5%? Yeah, we're reconsidering it. Do you want to talk about 8.6 again? So, are you opposed? You're in favor of reconsidering it?
Opposed.
Opposed? Vice Chair Murray? Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
Opposed.
Trustee Anna Maria?
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Okay, it's back on the table. Trustee Quinn?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to amend this motion to change it from 5% to the original 2.6% increase.
Do you have a second? Is there a second? Trustee Danko's the second. Yes, Andrea?
For a vote to reconsider, they cannot amend it. They have to reconsider the motion as it stands.
No, it's not correct. The motion to reconsider itself is not amendable. The motion is, the original motion is amendable.
Yeah, that's what we did before. Andrea, do you want to check on that? Okay, okay. The motion itself is amendable, but the reconsidering is not. Yeah, that's what we did before, isn't it? Could you put your microphone on, please, Andrea?
You know, Andrea, I was going to say, we did not. Well, reconsider. Well, reconsider is not.
In favor, in favor?
That's okay, you can go on, do what you need to.
I think that we didn't amend it, but we were allowed to, but there was the motion to postpone.
Madam Chair, if I may, the intent, and we can check with our parliamentarian who came to give a, you know, he actually did an in-service just a few weeks, a few months ago, and this came up. The intent of the motion to allow a trustee to reconsider is at the same meeting it's supposed to be, at the same meeting which we are, a trustee decides that, you know what, I voted a certain way, but I want to reconsider, I'm not sure I should have voted that way, so they put forth that motion, but you're not supposed to be amending the motion. It's supposed to be reconsidered in its original. That's, that's the whole point of reconsideration. But you're not supposed to be amending the motion. It's, it's supposed to be reconsidered in its original, that, that's the whole point of reconsideration.
I just wanted to know if anybody was still considering the fact that we get the five and then we can work from there? That by changing this again, now we're taking away all incentives? And I thought that was the whole goal, was that we could have some incentives? And the only thing I can conclude, sitting here watching what's going on, is it was let's make a deal at Halton Catholic tonight. And I say shame on all of you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I was consistent until the very last minute that I was supportive of a two point six percent. I was disappointed in the interaction that we had had online. And I've reconsidered that position now and I'm going back to my original, original thought that two point six was a fair package to ask for from the ministry.
In favor?
Abstain.
Opposed. In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion according to bylaw ten point two to reconsider item eight point six, executive compensation. We've got a mover and a seconder on that? Trustee Carabella?
Sorry, so, um, the request is to reconsider executive compensation. In favor? We have a mover and a seconder on it, so, in favor? In favor? Thank you. Trustee Ingrid?
Opposed.
Trustee Intermacy?
Opposed.
Trustee Michael?
In favor?
Trustee Danke?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
Opposed.
Trustee Anna Maria?
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Okay, it's back on the table. Trustee Quinn?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to amend, uh, this, uh, motion, uh, to change it from five percent to the original two point six percent increase.
Do you have a seconder? Is there a seconder? Trustee Danko's the seconder. Um, yes, Andrea?
For a vote to reconsider, they cannot amend it. They have to reconsider the motion as it stands.
No, it's not correct. The motion to reconsider itself is not amendable. The motion is, the original motion is amendable.
Yeah, that's what we did before. Andrea, do you want to check on that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. The motion itself is amendable, but the reconsidering is not. Yeah, that's what we did before, isn't it?
No, we're from the amendment motion. We had them probably.
Could you put your microphone on, please, Andrea? You know, Andrea, why don't you... We, we did not, we, we, yeah, we did not. Okay, we'll reconsider. Okay, we'll reconsider. It's not amendable. We did not want it. Pretty quick. We didn't want it. We'll reconsider. It's not amendable. The original motion was back. All right, so, um... We have the amendment. Uh, Trustee Quinn, the motion to amend it, the motion to amend it. Okay, so we're, we're having the amendment now. All right, so, uh, what is, uh, what was the amendment? Five to two point six. Okay, any other discussion on two point six? Or is it all on two point six? No other discussion? Okay, we're voting. Trustee Danko? In favor?
In favor. That's okay, you can go on. Do what you need to do.
I think that we didn't amend it, but we were allowed to. But there was a motion to postpone.
Madam Chair, if I may, the intent, and we can check with our parliamentarian who came to give a, you know, he actually did an in-service just a few weeks, a few months ago, and this came up. The intent of the, the motion to allow a trustee to reconsider is at the same meeting, it's supposed to be, at the same meeting which we are, a trustee decides that, you know what, I, I voted a certain way, but I want to reconsider. I'm not sure I should have voted that way. So they put forth that motion. But you're not supposed to be amending the motion. It's, it's supposed to be reconsidered in its original, that, that's the whole point of reconsideration.
I just wanted to know if anybody was still considering the fact that we get the five and then we can work from there? That by changing this again, now we're taking away all incentives? And I thought that was the whole goal, was that we could have some incentives? And the only thing I can conclude, sitting here watching what's going on, is it was let's make a deal at Halton Catholic tonight. And I say shame on all of you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I was consistent until the very last minute that I was supportive of a two point six percent. I was disappointed in the interaction that we had had online. And I've reconsidered that position now and I'm going back to my original, original thought that two point six was a fair package to ask for from the ministry.
In favor?
Abstain.
Opposed. In favor? Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?[1154.12]